Would everyone please turn their cell phones off while we sign off? And we all stand for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
President Angie Christian. Vice President Jan Barbas. Treasurer Roger Thompson. Secretary Andy Martin. Commissioner Roy Davis. Could we please have the others introduce themselves for the record?
Gary Dillinger, Port Manager. Lauren Collins, Attorney for Gary Dillinger.
Jim Coffey, I'm Attorney for the Board of Commissioners.
This is a public hearing to consider the dismissal or discipline that Gary Dillinger held pursuant. Mr. Dillinger's request for an open hearing is provided by O R S 192.6 of Code Two and
Okay. President Christian and Commissioners, my name is Lauren Collins. I'm an attorney from Salem, Oregon, and I'm here tonight representing Gary Dillinger. This is the time set to allow Mr. Dillinger to make a statement to the Board in response to the Board's past actions. As the Courts Counsel, Jim Coffey stated to me in a letter of January 29th of this year, Mr. Dillinger is entitled to a due process hearing to respond to complaints and charges brought against him. This is that opportunity. This Commission brought forth complaints and charges against Mr. Dillinger on three occasions. First, the Board of Commissioners met in executive session on January 5th of this year. Following that meeting for which Mr. Dillinger was excluded, Mr. Dillinger was asked to resign, when he did not resign, he was summarily fired. No reasons were given to Mr. Dillinger for that action. If he'd been afforded the opportunity, he would have requested an open hearing at that time. Second, the Board of Commissioners met again in executive session on January 9th. Mr. Dillinger was not advised of or invited to attend that meeting. At that meeting, the Board rescinded its prior action and voted to place Mr. Dillinger on administrative leave. He was still given no explanation for why, if he'd been afforded the opportunity, if he had requested an open hearing at that time. Finally, after I was retained, I sent a letter to Mr. Coffey, the Attorney for the Court, asking for an explanation of why Mr. Dillinger had been fired and why he had subsequently been put on administrative leave. That letter was sent on January 11th. On January 29th, I received a letter from Mr. Coffey. Mr. Coffey stated that the Court Commission had lost confidence in Mr. Dillinger and that the Commission no longer trusted Mr. Dillinger to act in the best interest of the Court. Mr. Coffey's letter outlined certain complaints against Mr. Dillinger. We don't know if those complaints and concerns are shared by all of the Commissioners, but they're the only reasons that we have been given for the actions taken against Mr. Dillinger. Mr. Dillinger is here tonight to answer and address those concerns. He will speak for himself, but I can tell you that he adamantly denies the assertion that he is not to be trusted and adamantly denies the idea that he has ever acted in anything other than the best interest of the Port of Brookings Harbor. Mr. Dillinger.
Thank you, Lauren. President Angie Christian and members of the Commission. On January 5th, 2018, I was abruptly asked to resign by the Court Commission, but I did not resign. I was fired for no cause. Afterwards, the firing was rescinded, and I was placed on administrative leave. All of this came as a major surprise to me. I did not know the Commission even had concerns about my actions or performance. I was not told about those concerns on January 5th. In fact, I did not learn of those concerns until the Commission's Attorney, Mr. Coffey, sent a letter to my attorney on January 26th. I do not believe I've been treated fairly. However, I have great respect for the Port of Brookings Harbor. I've given my heart and soul to this Port since I became General Manager in October 2016. Today, I remain committed to the Port. Consequently, I will address each of these concerns outlined in Mr. Coffey's letter. I will do my utmost to answer those concerns, and I will do so honestly. So my responses to the allegations in Mr. Coffey's letter. First, the misstatement about material sent to IFA. A letter from Mr. Coffey states that the quote from me in December 30th, 2017 article in a pilot newspaper is incorrect. I admit, I misspoke when I said that all the material regarding the bridge loan had been sent to IFA, and the Council had reviewed all of it. My focus at the time of the interview was on the IFA packet. Mr. Coffey reviewed that IFA packet, which included other resolutions and contracts, before it was sent to IFA. However, I agree with Mr. Coffey, he did not review that Hoover contract two years ago. I do not believe that Hoover contract was part of the packet sent to IFA. I remind the Commission that all these sayings involving a bridge loan occurred well before I was General Manager of the Port. Two, failure to tell the Commission of role in preparing resolutions regarding Resolution 446-7 and the Hoover Contract. Mr. Coffey's letter criticizes me for failing to tell the Commission about my role before I became General Manager preparing resolutions and the Hoover Contract. This was before I became General Manager of the Port. Mr. Coffey's letter suggests that I was not forthcoming describing my role in preparing the resolutions and contract. I think it's important to set back and put in perspective the meetings of the Court Commission during December of last year. The focus of December 13th, 2017 meeting was options regarding problems with B.C. Fisheries dock construction. At that time, I did not remember who wrote what documents, and this was not the focus of the meeting. The Commission made a motion for me to contact a second engineer to evaluate the dock structure's soundness. There were no other directions by the Commission to do further research on me resolution numbering or who wrote up the resolution or contract. In December 27th, 2017 meeting, the Commission added to the agenda the Resolution 446-7 number issue. I had no time to refresh my memory on this subject. I feel that motions were made and passed during that December 27th meeting and were done without complete review of the Court's staff. It was only after the December 27th, 2017 meeting, that I was able to return, review my daily reports, refresh my memory on what transpired two years earlier in my role in preparation of documents. When President Angie Christian questioned me at her store, I was upfront and told her what my role was involving Resolution 446-7. I never tried to hide any of this information. Number three, allegations that I never told the Commission that staff's review of resolutions was incomplete or that staff needed more time. The letter from Mr. Coffey notes that I told Commissioners for this in an email on December 29th, 2017, that staff had not been given sufficient time to research all documents regarding the resolutions and Hoover Contract. Mr. Coffey's letter suggests that if staff needed more time to conduct this search, I should have said so. Once again, it's important to put all this in context. Between December 12th and December 27th, 2017, I received an email from one Commissioner about Resolution 446-7. That Commissioner's only request was for meetings, meetings minutes, or audio regarding Resolution 446-7. I tried to satisfy this request from one Commissioner by looking for documents and audio, even though this was not a directive from the full Commission. After the December 27th, 2017 meeting with the Commission's direction, I instructed my staff to conduct a complete review of Resolution 446-7 and the Hoover Contract. Number four, talking to the pilot and not the full Commission, especially about Resolution 368. I am criticizing Mr. Coffey's letter for talking to the pilot news reporter and providing information to the reporter that was not provided to the Commission. Specifically, it was alleged that I failed to provide a copy of Resolution 368, Rules for Public Contracting, to the Commission. This is simply wrong. Resolution 368 was provided to this Mission as part of the packet for the December 13th, 2017 meeting. It is in page 97 of the Special Commissioner Meeting Packet. I was taught by former General Managers Ted Fitzgerald and Don Mann to be open and transparent with the press, and that's what I did. Number five, statement that I wanted to have the ICMS reviewed by Council and Commission before sending to DA and Sheriff. I am criticized in Mr. Coffey's letter for saying that I would not provide records directly to the Currie County Sheriff as ordered by the Commission. Let me be perfectly clear. I never refused to send everything to the DA and Sheriff. I simply wanted to run it by legal counsel and the full Commission before the Port documents left the office. It was not clear to me what the Commission wanted when it ordered the Port staff and me to sign any required complaint. Since legal counsel was not at the December 27th, 2017 meeting, it was even more important to run this by counsel first. My actions were designed to protect the Port. The packet, as requested by the Commission, was completed January 3rd, 2018, and emailed to the Court Council and Commission for their review and approval. I made it very clear in that email, which is attached, here, documented here, that I would send this packet to the Sheriff and DA as directed. Number six, working for B.C. Fisheries at the same time as General Manager for the Port. Mr. Coffey's letter states that I worked for B.C. Fisheries at the same time I was employed by the Port as General Manager. Mr. Coffey's letter is flat wrong about the timing of my employment and my work for B.C. Fisheries. I did not work at B.C. Fisheries prior to my initial employment with the Port as operation supervisor. My employment with the Port started in January 2015. In mid-2016, I resigned as an employee of the Port and worked for B.C. Fisheries at its new processing plant. I only worked there for a month, from approximately May 17th, 2016, to June 7th, 2016. During that period of time, I also did consulting work for the Port. After I left B.C. Fisheries, I resumed my operation supervisor position at the Port. Don Mann was interim Port Manager from July 16th to October 2016, before I became Port Manager. Mr. Coffey's letter suggests that I put the interest of the B.C. Fisheries above the interest of the Port. I must say that I find that suggestion highly offensive. I worked nine a day, seven days a week, for the Port of Brookings Harbor, and I put its interest above anything else. I did not give B.C. Fisheries any special treatment over any other tenant at the Port. In fact, I wrote a default letter to B.C.'s Fisheries for non-payment last year. When the Commissioners were questioning B.C. Fisheries' late payments, our response to them on multiple occasions is that the Port is treating B.C. Fisheries the same as any other tenant or customer of this Port. We are following Port policies for late payments and applying them equally to everyone. My statement regarding their tough year was simply relaying what I was told by Mike Manning. I was being transparent with the Commissioners. Number seven, hiring of a relative as part-time employee. Mr. Coffey's letter says that I failed to advise the Commission that I hired one of my relatives to work at the Port. Carol Bane is not a blood relative of mine. She is my wife's aunt. She has a potential to help with billkeeping and the audit. Commissioner's Chair at the time of her hiring was Roy Davis. Commissioner Chair Davis was fully aware of Carol Bane's relationship to me and being hired. I never refused to provide this information to any Commissioners. I simply told staff that it was not the Commissioner's role to be involved in my hiring of employees. However, the first time any Commissioner asked who Carol Bane was, I provided that information. All right. There are some achievements I'd like to let everybody know that during my time of General Manager of the Port. Acquiring approval for the IFA to purchase a new 50-ton travel lift and new reach lift crane to service the Port and its customers. We also bought a brand-new 3-quarter-ton truck. Securing $600,000 from the state for dock repairs. Completion of Oregon State Marine Board parking lot grant project to achieve the Oregon State Marine Board grant replacing the old boat lodge dock ramps. Upgrading all sewer systems to meet DEQ and harbor sanitary requirements. Also upgrading all outdated equipment and port restroom facilities. Complete overhaul of reoccurring port expenses to cut unneeded spending. Complete overhaul of the port budget to match financial reports. Complete overhaul of financial reports to show actual cost of doing business. Set up fund accounting as required by state law. This was the first time we met deadline to submit the fiscal year audit to the state and complete all of CPA's recommendations. The Port received an excellent review from CPA this year. Establish port rates into one document. Clean up the boatyard of general port RV park appearances. Identifying damage to port infrastructure, protecting the public, customers, from dangerous conditions, and plans for repair. Transparency of information to the state, to the county, to the Commissioners, and to the public. Provide weekly reports to the state, Commissioners, and the public. Rebuilding port accounts to have funds for repair and maintenance for the port's assets. Just two years ago, December, the Port had $55,400 in its checking and savings account. In December 2017, the Port had $334,511. It is estimated that the Port may need $27 million for repairs and bring it up to its current severe weather protection. Creating two-week work schedules for organizing staff work. Creating weekly office and field staff meetings to keep track of tasks and problem solvings. Staff worked as a team to overcome some difficult issues. Relocate the Port Office and securing all port documents to one location. Develop a plan to repay IFA missed payments and to get back on track paying quarterly payments. There are many more goals to achieve. As the other Commissioners said, this Port didn't become like this overnight, and it won't be fixed overnight. All the Commissioners praised my work over the past years to the state legislators, SDAO representatives, and IFA. One Commissioner even said I was the best manager this Port has ever seen in all of his years. I am eager to return to work and give your time and consideration.
Do you have any other comments or thoughts?
Well, the only other thing I would say is I know if the Commission wants some corroboration of some of the things that Mr. Dillinger said, I know Mr. Manning for B.C. Fisheries is here, and we have another, we have a former Port Commissioner, Sue Gould, that I believe is here in the audience as well, and so I don't know if the current Port Commissioner wants some corroboration of either Mr. Dillinger's accomplishments or of the statements he made about when he worked for B.C. Fisheries, but we have that evidence here tonight.
Do you folks want to hear anything from the other two?
I have a question.
Sure.
Did you get a review today? I didn't hear you talk about your review from this previous board right here and how it came out.
No, I didn't comment on that.
Would you like to?
Well, not really. I just remember it was a good comment, a good review. They praised my work. I don't remember all the comments that were done. I've been having bad things to say about me.
Did you receive a raise?
Yes, I did. And Mr. Coffey, I have a few opposing remarks after the Board has done whatever, before it reaches its decision, but after when it's appropriate.
Never mind. Never mind.
Do any other Commissioners have any questions or comments?
I would like to declare a potential conflict of interest in accordance with ORS 244.120, and that's because whatever decision we make here today might maybe have some impact on the lawsuit Mr. Dillinger filed regarding opening meeting law. Just if you're not familiar, it's just a declaration with a potential conflict of interest. The Commissioner still participates.
Speak up.
You guys speak up.
Jim, if you're going to be a politician, speak up, man.
Stand up. Stand up and talk. Excuse me. This meeting is for the Commissioners and Mr. Dillinger.
It's a public hearing.
That's enough.
I'd be happy to repeat my comments. I'm declaring a potential conflict of interest in accordance with ORS 244.120, and that is because any decision I made here today could maybe become entangled with the lawsuit Mr.
Okay, I do have a question for Gary. Did you, did you have any idea on January 5th what executive session was going to be about?
Absolutely not.
And I did not either.
Thank you, President Christian. But members of the Commission, Mr. Coffey, you've heard Mr. Dillinger's response to the concerns of the Board of Commissioners. I suggest that nothing that was raised, certainly in light of his comments and explanations, comes even close to giving this Commission a reason to terminate his still employment. As he himself said, he gave his heart and soul for the Port, seven days a week. If he'd been treated fairly, he would still be working here today for the Port. And I would urge that there's only one reasonable decision to be made tonight, and that is the decision to put him back to work for the Port. That's in the best interest of the Port staff, the best interests of the Port itself, and the best interest of the constituents that you serve.
I think this one is important to proceed further. I will say a couple quick things. In relationship to the statement that we received from Mr. Dillinger explaining the responses to my letter, although I wrote this letter in Senate to Mr. Collins, the information that was in that letter, I had to get from some other people, some other folks that were employed by the Port of Brooklyn. I didn't have any awareness. The information that is contained in the letter that I sent to Mr. Collins, I obtained from other members of the Commission, other employees. I didn't know anything about this until I got this, so even though the statements talk about the letter from Mr. Coffey saying this, that, and the other thing, this is just my report back to Mr. Collins, telling him information that I learned otherwise. I didn't have any involvement with any of this until after the January 5th meeting when Mr. Dillinger was originally out, he was on. Now that being said, I should also stress that most of the information that I got and placed in my letter, I received from a subcommittee of the Commissioners that I was dealing with after Gary was initially suspended and then placed on administrative leave as soon as possible after that. I talked with only basically two of the Commissioners in the Subcommittee. I didn't talk with all of the Commissioners, but the Subcommittee presumably got information from other people that they gave me, and that's the information that I used in my letter that I sent to Mr. Collins later on. So, all of that being said, the question now before the Board and what the Board can do is really one of four things. You can, number one, you can make a determination that the initial conduct that was engaged and the initial rescission of that conduct in placing Gary Dillinger now on administrative leave, you can rescind that, you can simply rehire him as to his former position with the District. During the time he's been on administrative leave, you continue to pay his salary, so he was on leave for pay, and you can just go ahead and rehire him. The second option before the Commission is you can go ahead and rehire him, but if you have other conditions that you want him to meet as a condition of being rehired, you can decide what those are, and at some point in time, if you want to, we can discuss them, and you can make a decision then to rehire Mr. Dillinger, subject to whatever conditions the Commissioners and one folks on him is rehiring. The third option is to simply, at this point in time, terminate his employment with the Port, generally for the reasons that were listed in the letter. And that, I mean, the primary reasons, really, at this point in time, is whether the Commission is comfortable and trusts Gary in acting in his role as head of the staff for the Port. Again, right or wrong, for whatever reasons were given in the letter, right or wrong, even if some of those reasons are incorrect and some of them are still correct, that the Commission still feels as a whole that most of the reasons for the termination are valid, then you can make that decision. The last thing that you can do is you can listen to what all the evidence is today, and then simply postpone making a decision, take the matter under advisement, and then if you have further questions that you want to ask of myself as your lawyer, we can get together in the executive session, and I can try to answer your questions, and if the executive session then is, number one, necessary, and the questions are answered during that session, kicking them out of executive session, then make a decision either to rehire Mr. Dillinger or terminate Mr. Dillinger or take one of those actions like that. So those are kind of the four things that you can do tonight. Do any of the Commissioners have any questions regarding what I just told you?
Could you clarify number four there? Were you able to go into executive session?
Well, ultimately, what you would do is you would simply recess the meeting tonight, reserve making a decision until after such time you've gone into executive session and discuss this matter more fully, let myself be your attorney, and you can come out of executive session and make your decision in an open meeting later on. So if you are comfortable, if you feel you have all the information that you need tonight, you can make the decision tonight. If you want to postpone making the decisions, we can talk about it further within a very short period of time. You can't hold on to this for long, and then you can make your decision a little bit later
So we can make motions, Jim?
Do you make motions at any time?
I'd like to make a motion to hire Gary Dillinger back immediately. I'd like to make a motion to rehire Gary Dillinger back immediately.[1361.83][1361.83](applause) No restrictions to his, no restrictions or no altercations to his original contract as January 5th, and no restrictions placed upon him as of tonight. This board so votes to rehire Gary, he will continue to do his job as he was doing it and serving January 5th.
Aye.
And is there a second to that motion?
Motion, please.
I make a motion, since he's an upwilling employee, he's had his time. Beat this now, we terminate Gary Dillinger's employment as of tonight.
I'll second that.
You guys should, you don't speak for the people. Oh, excuse me. You'll be asked to leave.
I'm ready for you.
Danielle?
Hold on, I'm out of here.
Let the commission take action and make their decision. I realize we have comments, but it would be better if you just held it to yourself.
So is the motion to dismiss the manager with cause or without cause?
With cause.
With the cause of, for the reason or reasons outlined in the letter that I sent to Mr. Collins?
I have other ones, Christian.
You see, other ones you should let.
No. I have some discussion. First of all, if we were to do this, I believe we have to issue a final check at the time that he's dismissed, so I wonder if we need to specify an effective date sometime in the future, and Mr. Coffey could apply on that.
You can do that, you can make it effective at such and such a date.
The board is looking at Mr. Dillinger's response for the first time tonight. We haven't seen this in advance. I think he's admitting that the information that he provided to the pilot was incorrect. I'm gonna be slow here, because I have to look forward to this. So I think he's admitting that he was the person who put together the Resolution 447, which was the focus of our concerns, and is saying he didn't recall that two years later. I don't find that satisfying. He refers to motions made at the December 13th meeting. It was an executive session. I don't want to spend a lot of detail going on what happened in executive session, but the letter we sent him does detail that a number of commissioners raised issue with this 447 at that time, and he's basically saying he didn't know anybody that knew was concerned about it, but several members of the board expressed strong concern. So, yeah, we had talked about Resolution 368 at the December 13th meeting, and it was in our packet, but we were talking about the part of that resolution that relates to procurement of personal services. Those are things like attorneys and engineers, that sort of thing. We weren't talking about the part that relates to contracting, and it was not brought up in the context of this emergency declaration that's at issue. And that's the point, that it was put in the newspaper in the context of the emergency declaration, but we had three meetings, and, well, two meetings and an email where it wasn't brought up in that context, and it doesn't fit that context, because the issue at hand was why a resolution had been put forward, and so it's sort of a bait and switch The issue with number five, review of console or not, I don't know. That was a discussion between Mr. Dillinger and President Christian.
Speak up, please.
Sorry. The issue on review of console of documents, number five, and this response, we just got a, that was between President Christian and Mr. Dillinger. I don't know if President Christian wants to discuss it or not, but again, I'm not sure that this response...